We can't handle places.
Waiting.
Joe, you miss it?
I was actually, when I came back, it's like. That's the most bizarre thing. I think that. That's probably the only something. Well, I don't know. And they must have. So now you need out. Well, that's the idea. Yeah, sorry.
But they like, when they were doing it the first time, setting up and they were. Somebody was stopped, talked to the nurse and began on like they're gonna crash or escape. Like they're gonna kill this guy's car and they were just getting around it.
I, yeah, I think I realized that they had lots of skill. But man, there's times if we've been trying, they're putting it on words. Man, I was like, good, no. I'm sure you're good, but I don't want to jump out of the way.
That day was so fun. It was such a fun event.
That was good. I'm so glad the kids could look at that and then it came out. It's gonna be double. It's gonna be oversold.
Eight grand. You had about nine hundred expenses, but was that sponsored? Or mainly sponsorship? Okay. Now that I know how much fencing space we have for next year. Ultra partnerships next year. But I mean, yeah, we only made about eight hundred dollars in. Actually, only about five hundred dollars in. Speed restoration and then there's some then most.
But so you get done with that and then they get a sponsorship to bring all the people out. And I can talk to the judge, candidate on this upcoming election and a couple others. He's like, if you do it next year, Cory, I'll do it. And I was like, we should get a bunch of the other. I would have done it. We just even challenge it to other villages and that we get other people involved.
And we could start looking, you know, which took less than two months to plan it. We'll start looking for the green wheels like. In winter, could winter language.
You know, they find out, tell me where this market is. I don't get it.
Facebook marketplaces where everybody got most of those. There were only like three of those. They're really like three of those green ones. That green machines, the big wheel green machine where. Like this, like it had the handles. Because they never made it down the hill. So there were three of them. They all crashed. I would say next year maybe go to green machines. Cause they caused a crash three times.
Yeah, I remember just so.
They're four women. She was a trooper though. She goes, she crashed and she was in pain. I could see.
Yeah. I was thinking of the woman just up in this room.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Hurney.
Here.
Ms. McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Thorne.
Here.
Ms. Bow.
Here.
Six trustees are present. We have four. We have a meeting. Okay, next item on the agenda is the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So move the athlete.
Second.
Moved by the athlete, seconded by McGuire. If there are any corrections or additions to the minutes.
There was one correction. Uh, Kelly, you, you had.
It said that I need to talk about the, I'm trying to think of it. Somewhere in there about the, uh, brought up about the water.
The cloudy water.
Cloudy water.
So the comment was made by Kelly, but it was made by me.
One James there. Noted. Yep. Okay, all. No other corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? No carries. Uh, starting off with the village pledge. Mr. Nemic.
You know, I said I have a non-speaking role. Civility pledge and the interest of civility. I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. And understand that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay. Uh, President's report. All right. Got my report this evening.
Uh, Mr. President, if we could, uh, I'd like to make a motion to move the, uh. Audit report presentation from eight o'clock until now, assuming that they're on board. Did they get on?
Here.
Okay. So I saw.
You moved?
A second.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by McGuire to amend the agenda to move the eight o'clock presentation. Of Lauterbach and Amen up to the present time. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion so carries. We will amend the agenda and Lauterbach and Amen can make their presentation for a moment. Uh, we've got someone from Lauterbach, uh. With us this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening. So I am Jen Martenson, a partner with Lauterbach and Amen. Obviously here to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, before we get started, I do want to start by thanking Eugene for all of his hard work during the audit process. Um, it really probably is a six-month process from when we have that first planning meeting. Then walking through internal controls, fieldwork testing, drafting the reports. To then presenting in front of the board this evening. Um. For Eugene, it's probably more of like a year-round process. So we appreciate all of the hard work that goes into preparing for the audit. So thank you to Eugene. An audit is required to be completed by state statute by an independent auditor. And really the goal of the audit is for us as your auditors to be able to provide an opinion on the financial statements that are presented this evening. So we have done that. We have issued an unmodified opinion. Which is a clean audit opinion. Uh, that is the highest opinion that we can issue and it really just means that the financial statements are materially correct. Um, so really most important information probably of the evening, uh, for this presentation is that we have a clean audit opinion again for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. So I know there's a lot of information in that report in front of all of you. And so I do want to just draw. The board's attention to one section that I think will be very helpful. Um, so that is the M D N A or Management's Discussion and Analysis, which starts on page eight. And really that's the executive summary of the audit report. Um, if you're looking at the PDF, it should be PDF page twelve, I believe. Uh, so that's really the executive summary of the audit report. It's going to be a nice narrative summary of all of the financial information to follow. Um, so really it's about twelve pages, takes the sixty-plus page report. And really pulls in all the information that you would need to know in narrative form. Uh, it'll touch on highlights for the year, changes from last year to this year, um, some interesting charts and graphs, those things. So. Really, if the board spends their time just in that, that page, those twelve pages, you'll have a full understanding of the entire audit report. So I certainly encourage you to spend some time there. Just to touch briefly on overall fund balance for the village. Overall, for the governmental funds, there was an increase in fund balance of four hundred eighty-three thousand. With ending fund balances of approximately two point six million. Of which about one point eight million is in the general fund or the operating fund of the village. I did also want to point out your budgetary comparison schedules where you can see comparison of budget to actual revenues and expenditures in more detail. Um, starting on page fifty-one and continuing in more detail on page fifty-five there at the back. And for the village this year, there were no funds that were over budget for expenditures. Um, finally, we do have a smaller report that is titled the management letter. And this is really where we would provide any communication during the audit to management and to the board that we felt would be helpful or necessary for our reporting. Um, this year you'll see there's a lot of GASB or Governmental Accounting Standards Board updates that are included. Um, so I'm not going to go into those in too much detail, but just so you're aware, there are a few statements coming out over the next two years. They're really keeping us busy here. And we'll work closely with Eugene to make sure that anything that needs to be implemented will be implemented. And of course communicate if there's any financial impact to the financial statements as we work through those. Um, finally, as part of the audit process, we do review the internal control environment. And we're also required to communicate with the board if we had any difficulties during the audit, disagreements with management. Anything of that nature. And I'm happy to say that we did not. Um, so really, as I said, we have that clean audit opinion. Um, and very grateful for the cooperation and efforts of staff on the audit. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for? No? No one has any questions? My presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much and have a great evening.
Thank you. Well, okay. That finishes the. Audit report. Presentation. Now look to the bunch report. Yes, I do have a report and I'd like to thank, uh, uh, Mr. Nemic for, uh, his stepping up and, uh. Uh, taking the non-speaking role. What I forgot to tell him is that there is a speaking role. It's called the clerkship report. And I'd like to respond. What are the comments that I heard regarding my movie till last? Uh, and the, and the person that stood out that the, uh, the email saying that I was going up there. Uh, it's, it's, uh, premature, uh, uh, to say the least. But I, I do want to thank Joe. Uh, you did a heck of a job. And despite what they say, you can use this time to talk as long as you want. No limitations. And so now I have a couple of points and would like to. Anyway, thank you. It's good to be back and, uh, this came in handy. On that, I have my team report. Uh, planning zoning, Mrs. Detmer.
Yeah, thank you so much. Had to find my unmute button. Um. We have received, uh, an application for an in-ground swimming pool, um, and required fence. And they. The applicant has requested that the fence requirement be waived. Um, they feel the. Auto cover that will be installed on the swimming pool would be sufficient. Past history with the village has been that. The, uh. We've always required fences, uh, to prevent anyone from possibly getting, um, to the water and having, uh. Hazardous situation. Uh, while auto covers are designed to hold almost five hundred pounds of weight, um, they still have to be operated manually to get them. Um, it's not like it's a, a. An occupant sensor. They have to be operated. So, um. There is a possibility of, uh, it being missed and being closed when it's evacuated from, um, the pleasure of swimming. And whereas they, they required four-foot fence with self, uh, closing, self-blocking. And closing, um, gates, uh, would prevent the opportunity for somebody to, um. Stumble into the pool, um, if it were to be left open. So it would be my recommendation because they're, they're basically appealing the, the order of. Required fence. That the village board weigh in and decide if. You wish to allow for this or, um. To not have a fence. Or to stay and keep the required four-foot fence, minimum four-foot fence.
Okay. Uh, if I understand this correctly, we've got the resident that is putting in an in-ground pool. And is requesting that the requirement for the four-foot fence be waived.
That is correct.
And it is the recommendation of our building code officials that this request be denied.
That is correct.
Okay. So it's up to the board. To take this consideration. Uh, we'll need a motion to approve the removal of the fence. I'm gonna put it in the positive. Okay?
So moved.
Moved by Thorn.
Seconded by Thomas.
Seconded by Thomas. To approve the.
Removal or waiver?
Waiver of fence requirement.
Waiver of the fence requirement of four feet. I'm sorry. Trying to put it in a positive spin so that we know where the votes go.
There's no pool or no fence there now, correct?
There is.
No, there isn't.
There, there, there.
Okay, okay. So pools there and they were asked to waive the fence requirement.
Can we ask questions?
So once we got the motion on the floor to waive.
The requirement.
Of the fence. Moved and seconded. Now we've got comments and questions, discussion.
There's a fence there now.
There was.
There's an above-ground. Uh, pool, semi, it, it above-ground and underground with a chain link fence.
Which required when.
It was previously approved.
Yeah, we didn't put it in.
My kid climbs it, by the way. So it's not that safe.
And it's not a self.
It's a regular.
Fence and it doesn't self-close.
Yeah.
Like you can put your feet in.
Yeah, my kid climbs it.
And, and it just, I have some info. I've printed copies for everybody to read and here's our pool person. You can ask him off any questions you like. Um, but this is showing.
Can we ask questions about the cover?
Yeah.
So it, it, it allows five hundred pounds when the cover's closed. Is it automatic or?
It's automatic. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah.
Automatic mean.
You push a button and it'll close by itself with a code. And it doesn't open unless you have a code.
Yes, correct.
We're familiar, I'm familiar with these.
Open and or close.
Okay, but each time it has, when people, when occupants get in and out, they would have to.
Yes, manually, yes, because.
Well, it closes it up, yeah, automatically with the switch.
With the switch. You like, so like.
They don't have to pull it over by.
Yeah, by hand, right.
Oh, so, so it is an automatic cover, you know, but it does have an A S T M safety standard requirement, right? So it has a federal safety. Uh, 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 standard. Right? Did I put Mark on the spot? Liability concerns since the ordinance requires events. I don't think the village would have liability. The homeowner certainly does.
Yeah.
And then would it be the same with the fence? I mean, if they're saying that their kids can climb over the fence, anybody can climb over the fence.
I would.
I mean, basically.
We spoke to the homeowner's insurance company about this and they said a pool is, is a pool. Of course, there's some liability. Whether someone accidentally gets through a fence, climbs it, or, you know. You know, it, it's a liability. We have a spa that came with a house that has a cover that you could make the same argument. What if I forget to put the lid on that? It's, it's, you know. It only takes a couple inches of water for.
A child.
So you're taking this, this above-ground pool out.
Yes.
And putting in a built-in in-ground pool with this auto cover.
With an automatic.
With the automatic safety.
Yeah.
Which is my understanding is becoming a national, just, yes.
All the municipalities.
There's many, yes, there's many.
They're pretty safe. Like an animal can walk on it and stuff like that. I'm familiar with them.
Up to almost five hundred pounds to walk on it.
There's been quite a few municipalities that have removed the fence since meeting the Verico Department going with the automatic cover with the A S T M. Safety, because it's the best.
I had, you want it? It's on here.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, providing this last winter.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah. I might have forgotten to highlight it.
Oh, states have adopted, you know, statewide, uh, to meet the Verico Department. For the best of my knowledge, I don't think there is a fence. That carries the same A S T M. Safety rating. Is that the automatic colors?
So you check with your insurance company.
Oh, yeah.
Make sure. Regardless of the liability, like. That was just asking about.
That'll give the definition of what he's talking about. Requirement for that cover.
Another question that I have is. If we were required to put in a fence. Would there be a variance needed? To go around this because of.
We'd have to rewrite.
The layout of the pool or. You mean. Like I, I just don't know where the. Fence would, I, if it was required, would there be a variance needed as well? Would it be? Outside of, I mean, I know it'd be outside of the pool, but it would be in a certain area. Barry, maybe you can.
According to the plot that was provided, uh, the fence. If located in accordance with the, um. Requirements for the patio fence, which has to be within three feet of the hard surface. Which is basically what we would be using. They would still meet their requirement for their fifteen-foot side yard step back.
Okay.
Well. Any other comments, questions, discussion?
So we're asking right now for this. I mean, I understand that time is of the essence. Are you doing construction currently with the pool or? Was that spring? Oh, okay. Um, cause. I mean, honestly, like everything that you've presented, I'm encouraged by it. I'm not familiar with pools, but I. Is there a way that we, I don't want to postpone it, but I, I'd actually like to look it up on it and learn more. Um.
Well, what's your construction schedule?
Is it spring?
Are you putting it in this fall or next spring? Spring. Next spring. So, yeah.
Yeah.
You'd like to postpone this until?
I mean, just the next, the next meeting would be fine.
November twentieth? You want to do it December first?
I'd like them to go ahead with their plans. So if we could.
Right.
Unless anybody else needs more time. It's just, this is the first time I've looked at this sort of thing and I really don't know pools. It looks. It looks encouraging. I'm sure of it, but especially because safety, I'd like to look into it scar. So, yeah.
I mean, you've been in business how many years?
Well, I've, I've, I've been doing this for over thirty-five years.
And he's been doing the Palatine and Palatine is one of them that, from what he's on our property, you know, we have almost an acre lot, Palatine.
Yeah, smaller lots.
Smaller lots.
One project that we just completed this year, five backyards, back.
Okay. Uh, they want to do that and we'll take a motion to postpone this until November twenty.
I would like to make a lot of the post on this to November twentieth.
Second.
Moved in second. Uh, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, we will take this up again on November twentieth.
Will you be available come back to the meeting? Uh, I know that you, I could probably do. Yeah.
Yeah.
You can? Okay, in case there's more.
Thank you for making the time.
On, on Zoom like I did last time?
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure you guys are available.
Yeah.
It just, this is something new to the board and it's going to affect the whole village. So.
Yeah, if, if you change orders, absolutely. I get it. Sorry, I didn't articulate that one. It wasn't yours specifically, but just looking at it as children and safety and knowing that bodies of water are naturally hazardous and. I don't know them yet. So I just wanted a little time to look it up. I'm sorry.
More people drowning water than any.
There you go. Oh, and I don't even have my watch. But thank you for all of this. We're getting a start on it.
But I mean, we're not, we're not changing the codes, right? This is a single.
Just a single.
At this point.
At this point, yeah. Okay, so it would be just variants on that.
Just for you guys.
Now with the code, I just want to ask that real quick. Would you guys? You guys would be the only ones with the code. Kids would not.
Oh, no.
It theoretically would set precedence because we currently have another in-ground pool putting in and they are compliant with putting in the required fence.
Oh, they can apply for a waiver too.
At this point, instruction, they're almost done.
Thank you.
Well, you know, all right, this sits with the pool. We'll be picked up again on the twentieth. Thank you all. Uh, anything else, Mrs. Detmer?
I am on another subject, uh, under, uh. Trustee Thomas's. So just be standing by.
Okay, all, fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the attorney's report. No issues there. No report this evening, Mr. President. My engineer report, Mr. Steele.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of items is first off is the street program is just about done. Um, and basically is all the stuff is just a bunch of list items. And then is also in the board packet, please, you'll see paid request number one. Uh, you'll notice that it's in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents, which is. Actually above the bidder's proposal. However, if you remember correctly. Is, it was actually approved for three hundred and four thousand. Uh, as you can see, we went over by a couple thousand dollars and now it's. Uh, as you can see, we went over by a couple thousand dollars, and that was in order to catch a couple of, uh, patches throughout the village that popped up after that. Um, basically, as we went above and beyond what was originally there, just because of favorable pricing. And also in order to finish out some of the sections of road, because if you remember correctly, is Hemlock, we were kind of stopping right at that intersection. And so basically, as we figured, might as well just continue on while we have it budgeted, and then also on Locust is we went a little bit through very well, we had them on, on the budget before.
Okay, I noticed they got the striping and the shoulder work done over there, had to finish crane.
Uh, crane, no, uh, that's actually coming up, is they're a little bit scheduled, or schedule wise, is a little bit backed up in regards to, uh, the little punchless items, so we're hoping, I talked to them actually on Friday, and so we're hoping, hopefully, this week is, obviously, it depends on the weather. I don't think people are supposed to have any bad weather, but you never know.
So sixteen K we're withholding enough.
Yep, it's more than enough.
Uh, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
So you said that, when I first looked at this, I thought that they went beyond what the bid was that we approved to, because the bid I was looking at said two hundred and forty-eight thousand?
Yeah, that was the bidder's proposal, except when, uh, when the street program was originally, uh, came before the board is, we'd actually budgeted three hundred and four thousand.
And that was at the meeting beyond the July thirty-first, I think I went back to the thirty-first, we went there, okay. Uh, and then I just want to ask kind of standard practice, um, I noticed that there are some things in here that, so you could, the, the engineer created kind of estimate of materials that would be needed, and then all of the bidders based it off of that.
Yep.
And then typical fashion is that they can have some discretion with what they use within that budget, or do they have to come to you for oversight? When somebody that doubled somewhere.
Yes, basically, yes, yeah, that was basically when, what happened is we added on that additional payment on Hemlock, which I approved.
Okay. Um, so the three hundred and six that they're charging us actually was within the three hundred and four that we had.
Yeah, right.
Okay, that makes more sense, and I will go back and take a look at that one, that would make.
Thank you.
Oh, and then also, sorry, so then in these, I wanted to know, going forward, do we typically see a difference of, from the bidding to the actual substantial or change?
Yeah, so basically is, what happens is, is we originally budgeted so much amount, and then, uh, like this year, for instance, is we were expecting a little bit more costs, uh, in regards to curb, and also paving prices, it's just based off of last year, they were so much higher. However, this year is they actually came in extremely favorable way under budget.
So we had the Hemlock and the part of the Locust kind of in mind as we run.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
It's just luckily we got some good pricing this year compared to whatever year was before.
Okay, any other questions for the engineer? If not, we have a motion to approve the, uh, payment estimate number one to Schroder Pay.
True.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Harney to approve, uh, pay estimate number one to Schroder Estment Services in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
I have one more question. So the pay, the two hundred ninety that we're paying, that's without the five percent routine, or we've already, okay. So that's going to be payment number two, or is this still ongoing?
No, it'll be paid in number two, yeah.
That's what I want to check on, complete, complete, thanks, I'm good.
Okay, more other comments, questions, or discussion, roll call, please, Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Harney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Six primary votes, no negative votes, a motion, so carry. Uh, okay, anything else, Mr. Steele?
Uh, is it?
All right, thank you, Jeff. Uh, it moves us to the Director of Finance, Mr. Van.
Request a motion for the approval of accounts payable in the month of two thousand nine hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Thor and seconded by McGuire to approve the accounts payable of November sixty thousand twenty-three in the amount of four hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Any additions, deletions, comments, questions? Question?
The bulk of that is shorter and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Typically, we don't have warrants in this size.
Yes.
This is a little steep one. Okay, no other questions, roll call, please, Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Primary votes, no negative votes, a motion, so carry. Off.
Let's look at that.
That's it, wait, off, thank you, Eugene. Okay, moving up to the comments, Mr. Western.
Yeah.
Got a lot.
Yeah, yeah. I did, I wanted to get some more clarity on the, uh, the ordinance for wastewater. With the Dundee, I'm one of the homes that had fifteen homes that still has a well, and I received the letter, and and I had some questions, and Kyle came over to help me understand. And I, I think what I understood was that the meter or the measurement for the wastewater was going to be put on, um, where the water comes from the well. And if that's the case, I don't think that's, for, for me, is going to be anywhere near an accurate number for wastewater. I have three acres, a lot of landscaping, garden, I have an in-ground pool, and from spring, summer, and fall, I water the yard, the landscaping, the garden, and top off the pool from time to time. So if it's reading coming from the well, I'm going to get charged for a whole lot of wastewater that isn't waste.
Well, it's the way we charge everybody. Everybody in the sewer system is based off of the water inflow of the house. That was part of the agreement, we had roughly eighteen residents that were what we call flat rated, because they had no measurement, they would have wells, and not on the city water system. And in the renegotiation of the agreement, West Dundee wanted all those un-metered residents on some type of un-metered. And the only way we can do that is to put it on your wellhead and measure all the flow in from that end, the same as we do. Anybody on the street here, we tap out the buffalo box, we read from that meter on. So, yes, if you wash your car, if you water your lawn, you may have to think twice about it, because you're going to be paying for water that might possibly go down the sewer system, but isn't.
Could, could I isolate the outside spigots?
And we got cross contamination type of thing. Got a hundred and sixty-five other people you might want to talk to about. That's the procedure, that's the setup that we've got.
It's just, it's not, you know, the reason for it, it sounds like, is that they weren't getting accurate readings before.
Right.
And they're not going to get accurate readings now.
They're getting closer to an accurate reading than what we could possibly do without putting a meter on the sewer itself. And at this point, I'm not aware of anybody that meters the sewer, that most people just meter the inflow of the water. It's a typical procedure throughout the region. So, yes, I can point to an individual over here on the other side of the room that is on sewer and knows what it's like to, you know, decide, do I water my car, do I water my lawn? You know, because that's, that's water that's not going down the sewer, but yet I'm going to be charged for the sewer.
All right.
You know, okay, moving on, no other comments from the public, the three reports, roads and parks, Mr. Harne? Uh, it's that time of year when Public Works would like to know if the residents and the board want the road salted this year, and how much we're willing to pay for it. So, uh, in our packets tonight, there's a thorough explanation, can answer any questions we have. It's sixty-six pages long of how we buy our water, who we buy it from, et cetera. So a challenge I have for Kyle tonight at Public Works is if he could take that sixty-six pages and consolidate it maybe to eight to ten sentences on how we buy our rock salt. That'd benefit the new trustees, it's a nice review for the rest of us.
So every year, the state solicits, uh, all of the municipalities in the state, if they want to participate in a bid of salt. Um, they usually do that in March, which the board has to approve if we want to join, if we want to participate in the state's solicitation or not. There's been a couple of years where we haven't done that, because there was issues with the state, there's before me, and the price per ton was ninety-three dollars. I actually had like a hundred and six, something like that, it was astronomically high. So we participate in it, uh, I set aside for seven hundred tons a year, for the contract, we have to order eighty percent of that. It also gives us over twenty percent over, if, heaven forbid, we have like a snowmageddon, and we just get hammered with snow. Uh, we need emergency salt type of situation. The price per ton includes the trucking, and if you look through that packet, you can see the whole state of Illinois, and we're, we pay by where we are located in the state. Downstate pays a little bit less, people closer to the Illinois River pay a little bit less, um.
They still bring it to the cell, the sale area, by the river.
Yeah. This year, we got, Cargill got the bid, uh, last couple of years, it was Compass Minerals out of Kansas, Cargill's out of Ohio. Uh, we get untreated salt. Okay, answer that, anybody have any questions on this all? We do have a stockpile from last year of two hundred tons, um. Usually every year, I mean, your last year was a pretty quiet year, but we go through salt, the, the biggest thing with salt, and people don't realize, the big snowstorms actually take less salt than like an ice storm. The ice storms are a nightmare, because you have to put it so down so thick, um, sometimes you have to back the truck up the hills, which takes more salt, because you're going slower.
How much salt do we have left over from last year?
About two hundred ton.
And Public Works is requiring, or it's asking for board approval for five hundred and sixty tons, and that's, that's the eighty percent, I guess.
That's the eighty percent, uh, this year, it's eighty-four fifty a ton, it's seven cents cheaper than it was last year. Don't know how they, you know, I don't know how they do their pricing, um, so I'm asking for five hundred and sixty tons at forty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and twenty cents, which we have bud, we budget every year for, I believe our budget for salt, uh, was fifty, it's fifty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, so we're under what we anticipate.
So they're asking for board approval, so I will make the motion that we approve the purchase of five hundred and sixty tons of road salt for the sum of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Moved by Harvey, seconded by Thor to approve the purchase of forty-seven thousand.
Three twenty.
Three twenty. Worth of road salt, that's eighty-four dollars and fifty cents per ton.
Mm-hmm.
For five hundred and six ton, five hundred and sixty ton.
I know it's why it's right for you.
Okay, any further comments, questions, or discussion? Ain't none, roll call, please, Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Six primary votes, no negative votes, we've got salt. Have you all? One other quick item, um, the speed humps that we've talked about on Locust. Um, they're going to be removable speed humps, and it's been decided that it would be financially irresponsible to put them in for about three weeks before he has to take them out again for the plowing season to begin. So we have them, we're not going to have to, we're not waiting to order them, we have them here, and as soon as the plow, the plowing season ends, they'll be installed.
Can I clarify something with you? Just, because there's chatter, it's not a table, it's not a bump, it's a hump.
It's a hump.
As long as we're all.
I know the difference.
Out in Mexico.
Yeah, a table.
Google it.
I, I don't.
I did, I did, a table is a type of hump. Well, it's different than humps, so, a hump has a little flatter, it's a table has a bigger, we're putting in humps, right, chief?
Yes, we are.
So much chatter.
And that was, that was agreed to with the fire department, because they don't affect, uh, their equipment when they go over them, so they don't slow down much. Speed bumps, they have to slow down to a stop to go over them, speed humps, it doesn't add to their response.
And, and they're going to be, and I'm, I know, yes, because you had mentioned about putting a permanent one in, because then you wouldn't have to wreck the new paving.
Go per, if we went permanent?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well. It would, it'd be, there's pros and cons to both.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I was arguing with somebody and said, no.
I had actually recommended that be wait, just because we were going to put them in for a month.
It makes no sense.
Yeah, it would have made no sense to put them in right now.
I have everything, I have the signs, the, the warning signs, it, so, I take the files off around tax day, April fifteenth, so sometime end of April, we'll be putting them in.
Oh, it's a move, removable.
Removable, they're rubber, yeah, it's a removable hump there.
Not a bump.
Rubber, they're about two and a half inches tall by two, two and a half feet wide.
Uh, there was a study made that I looked up, a speed and a speed table, the studies show that they both reduce the same amount of speeding on the roads that they're installed.
Interesting.
They said forty percent reduction in speed.
Great.
That's all I have to report, Mr. Brennan. You don't want to put a, a roundabout in this now, too? Yeah, okay, we've got salt, we've got the speed humps coming, so, all right, thank you, Ed. Uh, finance, Mr. Thor.
Uh, quite a few things, I'll, uh, pass things over to, uh, Mr. Van.
Uh, first item is the announcement of the tax levy of nine hundred and forty-four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. We have to have that reported in the minutes, and then, um, twenty days after, then we can approve the, uh, the tax levy. It is a five percent increase from last year, which is the, the maximum that we can do, but it's still less than what the cost of living adjustment is. So every year, we basically are losing money, um, it was brought up at the, um, finance committee, well, why do we even have to have one? Um, unlike a lot of other municipalities, um, our tax levy is about forty percent of our, our income. This is the only guaranteed income that we more or less have. And the problem with the way it's structured is that if in any year we don't take an increase, we lose that increase forever. So while it might only be a small amount today, um, as the years add up, we're talking about thousands and thousands of dollars. And, you know, I, I hate raising taxes, but this is, this is the only way that I know that they're going to get paid. You know, we just happen to be very fortunate for the last couple of years, where, um, other income has given us the, a sufficient amount to pay our bills and give us a little bit of surplus, but, um, the way the economy is going, I don't know how long this is going to last. You know, we're, we're making, this, this past month, we had seventeen thousand dollars of interest. Um, I think before last year, that seventeen thousand was probably the last twenty years worth of interest.
Pretty close.
So, um, again, like I said, I, I don't want to raise the taxes, but I, I really, we don't have a choice, you know, because we don't know what the future is going to hold. The average house.
It's, yeah, it's not more than the five percent, so no truth in taxation.
Exactly.
Required.
Yes, so it, for the average household in the village, it's about forty dollars.
It's the five percent of what goes to the village, correct?
It's, well, it's, um.
Yeah.
Not their whole bill.
Not the whole bill, it, it's, it's just five percent of the, of the portion that goes to the village. And, and we have, um, a relatively. And, and we have um a relatively small amount. If you wanna check the website, um, I have a little graphic on, on there that shows your breakdown of a typical taxes on someone's home. And it shows what little portion of your tax bill the village really gets.
We only get about six point six percent of the entire tax bill.
Yeah.
The rest of it, sixty some odd percent. And the park district, the library, the fire district, the county.
How does inflation work into this? You say we're paying a little more, what about inflation?
We are what is considered a P-Tel county. So what happens is that we can raise our taxes the lower of cost of living or five percent. So up until like it was last year, the cost of living was like one percent, two percent. So that was the maximum that we could increase our taxes. For the last two years, the um cost of living has been about seven to nine percent. So we could only raise it to five percent.
We lose.
So we lose.
So we're, we're losing now. It's seven percent. We're shy by two percent right off the bat.
Yeah, and you know, salaries are going up on four percent next year.
Do you know what the increase on the EAV is for the village? Been able to get that information from the assessor, how much did that cost?
Three point eight percent.
Three point eight?
Yeah. It was, uh, last year was six and a half. So we, what helped us a little bit is we had um new construction in the amount of, I think it was seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, that does account against you.
Right, it doesn't account against our, our five percent, yeah. That's it for the tax levy. If there's almost, unless there's a question.
Well, we just need to have that in the minutes for.
So then for the uh, the first meeting in December, we'll vote on the tax law. We have to have that into the county by the, the last Tuesdays in uh December, yeah. Okay, then um the second item is the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit. You have the presentation.
Uh, John, you have that uh EAP I sent to you earlier. Uh, yeah, take me a second. You can go ahead with your.
Um, we, we would just need a motion then to approve the uh twenty twenty-three audit.
Moved by Orange, seconded by Thomas to approve the, uh, such the fiscal year uh twenty twenty-three audit. I do have one little comment that I would like to uh share with uh everybody. John can.
Can take me a second.
While we're waiting on that, um, this is the first year that I've been here that uh we were able to have the audit done on time. Um, normally we've been getting extensions. Uh, and we were able to get the audit done. I was able to get the Illinois GADA stuff done. I was able to do the treasurer's report and we had the controller's report all done before the deadline. You know, a lot, a lot of this was, this is because of the audit, you know, they don't start, they're gonna do our stuff until September because we're such, such a small community. But because everything ran smoothly, we were able to get everything done on time. You know, last several years, it hasn't been done until the, towards the end of, of December. Um, the treasurer's report is up on our website. If anyone wants to take a look at it, it was published.
Uh, the thing I was waiting for before we moved on was a little note that was included in our packets. But uh, I wanted the public to see it too. Uh, it came from the auditors and it was, there is no adjusting journal entries in this past fiscal year. That is only the second time that's happened in the twenty-six years I've been reviewing these audits. So I mean, Eugene's been with us two years and in his second year, he was able to pull off an audit report with no adjusting entries at all.
Let's go over three.
First time he went through the audit, it was four days. The second time he went through the audit, it was three days. He's got it down to an hour, day and a half this time. The auditors even let, you know, noted the. Okay, John, it's all right. Thought it was an interesting little note that, you know, could be shared. Sort of like poetry. Okay, uh, the vote on the audit, roll call please. Mr. Daddley.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. The audit is so accepted. Thank you, one and all.
I should have that up on the uh, the website for everybody to see tomorrow. Like, the auditors asked me not to publish it until it was proven. Um, animal care control contract, that's not really me, but.
Uh, no, but it is, you know, contract. This is a agreement with the Kane County Animal Control. Should the police need to take an animal to Kane County, it just simply states that uh the people responsible for the animal will pay for it. If it does not claim, then we will end up with a tag on it. Uh, however, this is a group agreement with Kane County and wanting through all the municipalities. Uh, so the rate is fairly low. The, the big thing to us is the time it takes to get somebody down there and back. So, uh, and we do not have to use it that often, so you know, it's, you know, a nice thing to have in our pocket. Uh, with that, we have a motion to so accept or approve the animal control contract with Kane County.
Still move.
Second.
Moved by Thor, seconded by the athlete to approve the uh animal control contract with Kane County with the extension through twenty twenty-four. Any comments, questions or discussion?
Just so you know, we only used it once. It was just recently where we had Kane County come up to pick up a dog in the time I've been here. And we did buy a new chip reader and that's really how we, how we find where most of these dogs fall on, so. Not something to use that often.
And it, it's not a big item, uh, but it's something that, you know, it saves us money by being in with a larger group and getting a better pricing. And the county appreciates the fact that they know who the con, who's gonna contact them and, and not just have to take calls off the, the cop. So, and for those of you that weren't here, ten years and fifteen years ago, this was a big issue. Where do you take these animals after hours when somebody doesn't claim them? And some vets will take them, but they tend to charge you more per night for holding them than most places will because they're not designed to take boarding like that. Uh, the one in South Belgian, I can't remember their name offhand, uh.
Anderson.
Anderson. Uh, Anderson used to take them. They had a change in the board. They got perturbed with the animals that they were getting from municipalities, so they didn't wanna deal with municipalities. So then we were all left on our own there for a while, then uh Metro West stepped up and represented all the, uh communities within the county and struck this deal for us. That uh, we keep renewing on, on every two years or so. Does us wonders. So with the motion and the second, any further discussion? Roll call please. Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Daddley.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. A motion so carries. Thank you all. Next one.
Next item, um, we purchased a new uh copier this past July, I believe it was. Uh, we still have the old one. Um, it's well past its useful life for us, but yet it's still functioning. Um, I think we even have an extra uh cartridge for it. So um, I, we'd like to dispose of it. The contract expired on Saturday. So it is no longer under contract. If they continue a contract, it's, it's probably around twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars. And uh, right now it's in, sitting in the police department and uh chief doesn't, you know, see a need to, to keep it at three thousand dollars.
Buy a lot of tiecon or over number twos and we will pass for that change.
So I figure what we would do is um, a little birdie once said that uh Hines might be interested in it because it was better than what they had.
Well, let's put it out there on the market and see.
And if not that, we'll do, we'll do like the, the deals like we did with the playground equipment and have someone pay us to haul it away.
Uh, so we need the approval to dispose of the uh copier. Moved by Thomas, seconded by. Hardy. Moved and seconded to authorize the disposal of the copier. Comments, questions or further discussion? Roll call please. None talking, I'm getting bored. Which you keep saying the same things over and over. No, I just, I reverse the order. Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Mr. Daddley.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Affirmative votes, no negative vote. We are authorized to dispose of this copy.
Um, the last item that I had was the insurance renewals. We had our finance committee on October thirty-first and then on November first, I got the email from our insurance company about the uh, the, the renewal. Um, the situation is, is that if uh, if we do any sort of changes, they have to happen before December first. Um, and, but it doesn't take effect until January first. Um, he priced it out for us and there's basically three options. Um, if we stay with our current plan, the price increase is um seven point six one percent. The other option that is equal to our current plan, but with a different company, is basically a twenty-five percent increase. Um, is, you know, alternative um, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, that is a, a lesser quality that would save us basically three percent, but it is significantly less insurance. It would be more out of pocket for um employees, a, a lot more out of pocket. So my recommendation would be to continue with our current plan with the seven point six one percent increase.
Okay.
I saw move.
Seconded by Thomas.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Thomas to approve the renewal of the uh, insurance as presented by
Insurance?
Yeah.
It's Blue Cross Blue Shield, but it's um, Assured, Assured Partners or whatever.
Assured Partners and uh broker.
Yeah. They, they used to be Corco.
Why, Corco, that was a name I was looking for. Now Assured Partners.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, that is a seven point three percent increase. The option is three point three percent less, so it's a ten percent spread.
Right.
So comes down to a little over ten thousand dollars or so a year. But as Eugene pointed out, the option is not as good as what we've got, what our employees currently have. And the deductions raised and out of pockets go up on the uh option.
Do we know the average it costs the place?
We um, I, in the spreadsheet or the, the stuff that you guys got, it, it
breaks down.
Broke it down for each individual and how much more they would have to pay. So.
And it's all going up and. And it's the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, the seven point six percent is cost of living. Which goes back to the tax levy of why I asked for five percent.
Still gonna be short.
And we're still gonna be short.
And historically, the board has always looked at insurance as something that while we have low salaries, we have a good insurance policy for our employees. So, you know, we wanna save ten thousand dollars or do we want to, you know, keep employees happy?
Some of our employees are working for the insurance. Why, why would we not go with the current?
Yeah, I would agree.
All right, then on the vote, guess what? It's gonna be roll calling. Mr. Daddley.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Hardy.
Aye.
Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes. A motion so carries.
I think that's all I've got.
You had the majority other evening, I'll say that. Okay, thank you Eugene. Uh, water and sewer, well.
Um, uh, the two, two items, uh, as Mr. Lister brought to our attention, the sewer meter install program is under, is going on. And Wendy updated that we have ten of the fifteen remaining residents completed. And we are on schedule and I will follow up with you, Mr. Lister, about the remaining five, but they are scheduled to be completed by November twentieth. So, and then um, secondly, we had uh, an incident at nine oh one Willow with sewer repairs. And I wanna thank Trustee McGuire and Kyle for being outstanding. I was very ill with the flu and Jenny was, was in contact with the resident and then helped them get in contact with Kyle. He was out there that evening and working on this sewer issue and I would speak to it, but I think he'd be more succinct and.
Yeah, so we had a couple, couple of issues. Nine forty-two Willow turned out to be homeowner's line was clogged, so that was nothing. Uh, nine oh one Willow is gonna be a big bill, but basically back in two thousand and five, there was a res, the resin on the corner there was added to our sewer district. There are gravity fed sewer unlike all the other ones. And they had a blockage, well, we had the blockage in our sewer main. It was causing uh backup in their pipes, in their crawl space, and then it was, it's all, it was overflowing in their yard too. So we had to jet out the sewer main and then that was a temporary fix. Week, about a week and a half later, we had to go back out there. We ended up digging up the sewer main, replacing all the fittings that were put in and making it more accessible for us if we ever have an issue with blockage again, where we can just pop a manhole and then jet out the sewer main, so. Long story short, it was a big mess. There is currently at the stop sign of Willow, you can see it. There's a white pipe sticking out. Don't be alarmed, it's just a sewer cleanout. We're waiting for the ground to settle. Once the ground settles, we'll cut it down and it'll be below grade, so nobody hits it. It'll probably be end of the week this week.
I'm ready to pound the dough and get you out on a Sunday.
Yeah, it was Sunday, all day Sunday, it was about twelve hour day.
Okay.
And thank you very much, Jenny.
All right. Anything else, Miss Bell?
Nothing.
All right, thank you Courtney. Uh, police and public safety, Mr. Daddley.
Um, I don't have anything, do I? Chief, you have anything?
Uh, just our, our squad car that we took delivery of the weekend before the fourth of July has finally been built. So all I'm waiting for is the IT hookups and that'll be actually on the road, so it'll take five months.
Was it a chip that we were missing?
It was the, actually the outfitter, our, our outfitter was the one that was backed up. They were so backed up because they couldn't get parts for so long. And then all of a sudden, when parts came in, they just got backed up, so, you know, they ended up getting us finally last week.
So this could be the oldest blue car we have.
With the last mile.
That's awesome.
All right, thank you Steve, thank you Chief. Uh, building environment, McGuire.
Nothing tonight.
All right, thank you gentlemen. Uh, building and zoning, Thomas.
Um, I was working with Barb about the uh eighteen fifteen Amcor and the approval of a parking pad they put in um, off of their new driveway. And. And I was concerned about if it was on village property, but. It, Barb, correct me if I'm wrong, um, it is not on village property, correct? It's, but it's where it needs to be because there's a big, big tree that would prohibit them from putting this. Parking pad in.
Where they have it, if you look at the pictures that are provided, um, it is actually on. Village property, it's kind of split, not quite half and half. Um, the contractor has been amazing to work with and um, had even said that if it doesn't work out. Um, they'll fill it back in, but they had proposed putting. Basically like half of it, which ends up looking like, excuse the term, a sugar cone, sitting there and I was concerned that the uh. If someone would start parking there, that it would be very easy to, to overshoot the side of the, the uh. Asphalt and end up with a muddy mess there on village property. And because we do have several um, properties that have. Parking areas uh that are half hold harmless, um, it would be my recommendation that we approve. Allowing the asphalt there because it's not, um, in my opinion, worse than having. Like the, the paver walls and, and bricks around culverts that are actually closer to the road. So, um, and, and that would allow them to save their beautiful mature tree. Sorry, I'm a tree lover. And um, also allow them to have their parking area. I did ask if they would be willing to. Put it more in the front yard and they really don't wanna be looking at cars out there. Front windows, which I can understand.
And I went and looked at it and it, it looks.
And, and yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Yep, we have the hold harmless agreement that we have, that we utilize, Mr. Schuster, um, which is what was utilized for the one that I. Showed you on Myrna Court, um, that. The two should look very similar, uh, if the Elm Court property is allowed to continue and, and complete the project.
We use a licensing agreement to license the use of the right of other instances.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schuster, say that again?
In other instances, we've used a licensing agreement as a, it, it uh. As a termination clause uh, uh, in it. That allows uh, the private property owner to use a portion of public property. Uh, as long as it continues to be allowed by the village.
And, and.
This location, there's not likely to be, you know, it, it. Uh, there's probably not gonna be any reason to terminate it, but all the same, I'm just pointing out that that's. What's been utilized in other circumstances.
And, and if I may, the other ones that we have are the ones that just basically. Um, as in Title Six, which is what we'd be utilizing is the hold harmless agreement and it get, gets recorded. Uh, in perpetuity with the property, um, so it would go with any of the future owners, should they decide to sell.
Was that similar, Mark, what you're talking about, that licensing agreement? Is that similar? That's what we use for that.
But now they were on village property, this is not on.
Part of it.
Well, part of it.
It, it is, yeah, the clarification was, part of it actually is on in the right of way of the culvert section.
So.
So. And, and what we've been utilizing like for the, forgive me for speaking up, um. Mr. Schuster developed a, a, basically a boilerplate hold harmless agreement, so when somebody comes in.
I understand, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, and, and that's what we. Yeah, and that's what we've been utilizing for, um, the right of way around culverts where they are putting in. Like pavers around the flares or utilizing instead of flares, um, or uh, putting up. Uh, larger amounts of, of landscaping, so to speak, um, in the village right of way. And it's what we utilize for Myrna Court. That particular instance is somehow some time. That had been expanded and when the new owner came in to redo the driveway, it was an existing situation.
So was there a reason we didn't do something like? That with the timber drive location? Cause we charged them a lease, a leasing fee, right, Mark?
Right, um, because it was, uh. I don't wanna say permanent, but it was some paving or, or improvement into the right of way. The, the uh example we're talking about has a right to terminate it. If there's a reason that it no longer should be in the right of way, or the right of way is gonna be improved in a way that requires it be moved. The village has a right to end it.
The one on timber?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like we should have that right on this one too.
Right. That's what I'm thinking. Now, now talking about it.
It's, if I may, it's not quite the same situation in that theirs wholly comes off of village. Property, um, and it was approved. That agreement was originally designed well before the other hold harmless agreements that have been put into effect. Um, in that licensing.
So I'm just wondering why we didn't do the whole harmless agreement for this timber drive? When?
That was an extension of an original, I believe, two thousand eight licensing agreement.
Right.
Right.
And that preexisted the, the change to Title Six, um.
But it had expired with the new owners, so that's why I'm just wondering why we didn't do the whole harmless thing and we did the licensing.
I think it has a whole harness provision, it's just, it's broader than that.
And if I'm not mistaken, that's almost totally on village property where this is just a slight sliver of it.
Yep, so it's not a drainage area and that's why our concern there, yeah.
Um, no, it's, it's a, it's the normal swell. Yeah, it's, it's not any. Where really, that would affect the, the swell or drainage.
It's, it's kind of halfway up their existing driveway, so it's.
Right, yeah, if, if you look at the first picture that I gave you on, on the.
Yeah, they're not in the package.
It's not in the package?
No.
Oh, golly, I'm sorry, I sent it in. I gave you sixteen page report. No wonder you're confused. Sorry, the GIS shows that they. Why don't we table this till the next time and I'll make sure that you folks have it?
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm motioning.
No.
You know, Kelly and I looked at it ourselves, it's, it's not that complicated. It's their driveway.
And it's, it's empty and above the driveway, but it's above the swell.
It's above the swell.
On the right, I'm sorry, I'm looking at a picture of it on Google, man. Is it the side with the big trees just side out or, okay, on that side closer to the road? You're facing the house, it's on the right hand side of the driveway.
It was, when the permit was issued in October, the plat that was given. Clearly, clearly, so this parking area would be on, on their property about halfway between the property line. And the garage. Unfortunately, they have a beautiful mature tree there. And so the contractor moved it in order to not damage the tree. And when I went out for the base inspection, it was found that. It appeared to be on village property, I, in, in part, I couldn't, I didn't know exactly where it was. Mr. Steel was kind enough to go out and look at it. He too wasn't positive of the area. So the contractor of his own volition found the, the pins. And went out and marked the pins with cones and then drew the line across and they were willing to keep it on the, the uh. Their property only, but what this basically gives you is a piece that. You could pull off of the main driveway, but like I was explaining, it looks like an upside down sugar cone, so that the area. Closest to the village property would be this point. And that was my concern is that. If I allowed them to do that and keep it on their property, they'd end up driving off of the pavement when they were parking. Not, not maliciously, but just because. Because of the uh, the situation, um, I don't know, can you folks see my mouse?
So are we trying to save the dead tree?
Yeah, the.
Yeah, the tree is huge.
Are we trying to save the tree though?
Yeah, yes, it's a healthy tree and.
Right there.
And that driveway is right here.
Oh, okay.
How many feet into the R O W is it going?
It looks like about five to six feet, isn't that right, Barb?
Correct. At the, at the widest point.
That's a corner left, there's nothing.
There's nothing there, right?
Yeah, no. So where's the R O W?
Is this the house?
Yes.
Yeah, which is wider than the.
The one that, okay.
It's the house that you had.
This is the opposite side.
There you go.
And, and so if, if you can see where that arrow is on the current, the, whoops, it just keeps flipping back. There's like a little tiny bush there. The village right of way is actually. Um, if, if you can move the arrow slightly towards the garage. That's up, thank you. That's about where it comes in and. Because of the curve here on the street coming up to Locust. That portion, if you were to go take that arrow and goes straight towards Locust. That's the area that ends up being on village property. So the, the, the base of the parking area is all on the, is pretty much on the. The vill- the property owner's property, it's the wider portion. Which is the opposite tip that goes towards the corner of Locust and Elm.
I think we should vote on it tonight, I think it's pretty explanatory now.
My concern, I agree to vote on it, but I think my concern is if we've got other people with that licensing thing.
They're the only ones.
Part of it, and part, not a big portion of it is on it, are we gonna have issues if something? Down the road, I guess that's.
Yeah, well, it's a vehicle parking area partially in the village right of way, yeah.
So I, I'm fine with them having it.
Been here before, yeah.
I don't want us to get in any trouble if we do it.
The question, is it a licensing agreement or the hold harmless?
Right, that's my question.
The hold harmless agreement that we utilize specifically states and the homeowner has. Agreed to sign the hold harmless agreement. If there's any work done that's necessary by the village. As part of the hold harmless, they realize that the village will only restore it to grass and if they want to uh redo the asphalt. That's wholly their own cost.
Right, but in the other situation, it also said it was unlawful to park a car in that area. And that's, yeah, that's, the reason they're doing this is to be able to park a car in that area, so.
Correct.
That's, that makes it more like the timber drive situation than just the whole harmless building. Or a retaining hole or something, so. For what it's worth, I, I, I would say if you're gonna approve it, approve it subject to a licensing agreement.
Okay, then I'll need a copy of a licensing agreement if that's how the board wishes to go.
Can get it to you tomorrow or the next day, for sure.
Yeah, if the board approves it.
If the board.
And, and, and again, folks, I am so sorry, I. Spent about four and a half hours putting together that report, I'm sorry you didn't get it.
All right, we have a motion to approve a licensing agreement, late in fifteen Elm Court.
Prove the uh, proposed parking area partially in the right of way, subject to.
Subject to.
A licensing.
Subject to, okay.
Thomas, yes.
Thomas motions.
McGuire.
McGuire seconds. Any further comments, questions, or discussions? Not? I promise I'm gonna have one vote that I'm not gonna ask you to do a vote.
Do you, can I ask a question? Steve?
Oh, okay, uh, Mr. Daddley.
Hi.
Ms. Thomas.
Hi.
Ms. Bo.
Hi.
Ms. Thor.
Hi.
Ms. McGuire.
Hi.
Yeah, Mr. Hardy. Yeah, okay, six affirmative votes and no negative vote, the motion so carries.
Thank you everyone.
Mrs. Dettmer will work out to three left off Washington next day. Okay, anything else?
No, thank you very much.
All right, thank you Barb. Uh, old business, any old business come before the board? Jimmy, you wanna do your old business, we'll do that now.
We can do that.
We do have one other business.
So we did the downhill monster dash, we raised just about eight thousand dollars, we had some expenses, so we did want to, you guys got most of the money, but we wanted to. Kelly made this one. I am not. The reason why did he give us teams for the total, the total was seventy-one twenty-nine just from the downhill monster dash. So we have that and then also. Um, the police department and public works helped out so much for the downhill monster dash. So we'll be providing lunch on Friday for you guys, we'll bring it around noon if that's good for you guys.
Nobody got hurt?
Uh, well, uh, you're the attorney, so no. So yeah, so only eighteen thousand more to go for the fireworks, we'll get there.
It was good, it was a good turnout and everybody really.
So fine, really great weather.
And we sold, you know, we did a fifty fifty grapple and.
Oh yeah, a resident on Glen, Glen Oak won five hundred and ten dollars. So yeah.
So it was a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else on the old business? Uh, new business, new business, it's that time of year, folks, holiday hour. Let's see what we got for the holidays this year. Thanksgiving is on Thursday, that's a typical day, we typically give the Friday after all. Then we get into New Year's and Christmas. Christmas is on Monday this year, which is the twenty-fifth, which is a holiday, so do we give them this? Tuesday, twenty-sixth? They're missing Christmas Eve because it's a Sunday. We typically give them Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
What have you done in the past that I? I mean, I, I, I'm just curious, cause I know like when I was working, we did not get that next. They should get two days, I think.
We were contracted to get Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
So if that's the contract, then I say we give them the day. Two days.
Friday or Tuesday?
Friday or Tuesday?
Oh, oh, can we add some points? Thanks Steve.
So is there work? We were leaning towards the Tuesday.
Yeah.
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 You have to make it. It's Thursday.
I mean, as long as.
It, you know, it will be done. It, you know, it'll be done. It'll, it'll be done. Yeah.
Okay.
We get Tuesday.
Tuesday, December twenty-sixth and Tuesday, January second.
Yes.
Because Monday's gonna be New Year's. Okay? Anything else? We will have tha- the day after Thanksgiving and the day after Christmas and the day after New Year's.
Is it the second is the day of?
I mean, yes.
Tuesday, I'm saying.
Yeah, January first will be Monday.
All right, guess what it is, sorry.
Uh, we'll get to revisit this again in about a month when the board comes out with the schedule for the board.
I was gonna say, the New Year's Day is the first. Obviously, New Year's Day is the first, sorry, it's the first Monday, there we go.
There we go. When you start looking at next year's calendar. Okay, we have a motion to uh approve those holiday hours. Moved by Hearn and seconded by Thomas. Need further comments, questions, or discussion? This involves money. Ms. Bo.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Ms. McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Daddly.
Aye.
Ms. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Hearn.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, a motion so carries, thank you all. Okay, any other new business to come before the board?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you do note, I did not ask for a vote.
I didn't just hang out the reports for.